Have we already recorded on tape still?
Yes.
Yeah, you don't record it.
Somewhere this.
Kevin, let me know when you're ready.
Why is this considered a thing?
You didn't have a full table there. It's the car's own fault. Looks okay. We'll work all of this.
All right. Want to start? Before we start, I'd like to ask everybody to turn off your cell phones and pagers because it interferes with our taking matters. The meeting of the Summerville Planning Board for July fourteenth, twenty twenty one will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meeting Act has been provided in a on a copy of the notice specifying date, time, and location was one poster on the bulletin board outside Borough Hall, two mail faxed or emailed with current rates, and three given that equipment is threatened. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. If questions or comments must be limited to the issues the board may consider achieving decision and a deplorable appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times.
Bernie Nevada.
Here.
Peter Rosensky.
Here.
Dennis Sullivan.
Here.
Jane Kabuda.
Here.
Andrea Dare.
Here.
Arthur Akins.
Here.
Jason Kraska.
Here.
Al Karestis.
Here.
Larry Cleveland.
Here.
Christopher Raddick.
Here.
And others will not be present this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing we have is a resolution of approval for eight twelve Division Street. So moved. I have one collection. And I think it's just a title on under right after the second page after now therefore be resolved. Item E says the appron agrees to arrange for additional weekly pickups and if needed or if needed as a result of the expansion, but doesn't say pickups of what.
Mars all the ways.
So with that, anybody else have any comments?
I stopped in there a few days afterwards. He was extremely optimistic. He was just very and again, it's nice to see a business, as I mentioned the last week, it's nice to see a business thriving and outgrowing this space and rather than relocating somewhere else.
Right.
We've seen it on nature and it's nice to see that kind of confidence.
Absolutely. Okay, whenever you're ready, Tom.
Hi.
Yeah. Neither of us here.
Bernie Nevada.
Yes.
Dennis Sullivan.
Yes.
Jane Kabuda.
Yes.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Arthur Akins.
Yes.
Jason Kraska.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Al Karestis.
Yes.
And Christopher Raddick.
Yes.
Okay. The item number five, the latest resolution for Summerville Multi-Family LLC is being carried to August eleventh without further notice.
Ever notice.
With.
With notice.
With notice?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, with notice. Okay.
Yeah.
It's ready. Okay, so we're going to have the discussion of cannabis ordinance. And I would like to start with Mike's letter. And see where we go from there.
Yeah, just about the ordnance considering. Right now, the ordinance is starting first page. This is listed as a permitted use to V five, but there's some specifics and legislation that was passed. But I just think the best specific should be ordinance to zoning officer. See, again, it's permitted use. You can't put it in the residence or premises. I think you got to get the zoning officer that told. So it has to be an asterisk or something for the ordinance saying what those conditions are. So he looks this up. Right. There's no application. One of the first things they do is look for zoning.
Question, just for with that saying that it can't be on any property, it doesn't have to be on the same building. If it's on the same property, then it can't be. For instance, in the V five over where the liquor store is on twenty two, it couldn't be anywhere on that strip because there's a liquor store there?
You got to look at the definition of premises. That's why I didn't change the definition. That's why I want to see exact word for word. So I can go back. It's two hundred and forty pages. There's about thirty five pages of definitions. So I can get the board that definition.
Does that have to be a standalone building?
That's the question.
And that's that was my understanding.
That business has to be home, standalone business can't be a strip.
Can't be in any kind of strip mall. From my understanding, the way I read this, that's how I read it.
I teach you the definitions in the board records of premises. I just, I think when I left the language, just as a rip because of those issues.
What's the concern? When the laws proposed here in town, it mentions a one acre stipulation, I believe, for
We can get the property. Right.
And I was just wondering how we came about that number. Is that something that's being done across the state or is that just a section of town?
It's up there.
How do we, how do we?
Generally speaking, the D five is on the highways.
Right.
So you generally have establishments which are not small scale, car garages, things of that nature, car washes which require square footage and that's for that acre. If you look at the zoning maps, there are parcels in the D five which are much smaller than or one acre. So generally speaking, to accommodate the activity, you have a larger lot so you can have a parking.
Well, that's exactly your concern that was that you mentioned while in your discussion here about the fact that that communities are going to have relatively few of these establishments, that there might be quite a need for parking because of the fact that there aren't going to be a whole lot of places for people to go.
My concern frankly is not to create an D and B in Summerville. Not D and B. D and B, no, no, COVID did much better because you can't walk in, you didn't have to wait. But during COVID, every, I would say six months, the mayor, the residents were upset because we're parking everywhere on that D and B. Why? Because frankly, that strip law on roll apart, it doesn't have adequate parking for the normal operation of the D and B, in my opinion. But this is after fifteen years. I've been here in fact. It comes up all the time with the parking D and B. So my concern, jump into that now, is if we had a gas station, the gas, there's a gas station on Gas Avenue right next to the Bowlerton, very small parcel. And they came in, where's parking going down?
Right.
Are you going to park them down?
You have to line, you'd have to line down twenty two.
Right.
To the brick door.
Mayor just found a definition of premises. Includes the following areas of location licensed under the act, all public and private enclosed areas at a location that are used in the business operated and the location including offices, kitchens, restrooms, storerooms, all areas outside of the building that the division has specifically licensed for the production, processing, wholesale sale, retail sales of marijuana items. The location of the division has specifically licensed for the production of marijuana outside of the building, that entire lot or parcel that licensed owns leases or has the right one.
Right.
I don't think that says you can put it in, as long as it's a separate store. I think you can put it in one of the separate.
And that's, I just wasn't sure what that.
But what about the, like, they're going up on twenty two and down unfortunately like Larry and I just saw. And there's, you know, McDonald's and all of that is, and if they decide to put it there, they're not that far from the high school. So is that an issue there too?
I think we can get to that. The next comment I have is walk through the report real quick. It appears the legislation says any municipal approval. So to get their state licensing requires some form of municipal approval, either from the planning board, the zoning office, or something has to get approved.
Okay, so it is in this ordinance. Miracle evidence too, correct?
Yeah, the way Kevin has it written, or the council has it written is too, with if any minimum separation businesses, it's going to be, if I'm correct. Right. So I had brought up in the two hundred and forty pages, there's an odor elimination plan for all the different classes. Odor seems to be an issue here, at least for the state.
I'm wondering though, for class five, if I mean, they're not going to be cultivating your doing.
I think everybody still, apart the application statement classified, you have to submit an odor elimination plan. I don't know if it's an establishment, it has to be some type of special rules. I don't, I'm just telling you it's required for the class five.
So my question, and you know, with your comment on it, then my other question is if, if they have to have that already, then do we need to have a setback from residential properties in there? And are we talking about the physical building? Or the property would have to have the?
They could, they, it's not a setback. It's you have to eliminate that order of sweeping.
Which is already in there, isn't it?
That's part of the overall.
The state license requires an odor elimination plan. I bring the odor up just for thought saying the parking, the potential killing issues, slamming doors, help, the separation. As everyone here knows, the D five residential properties, I was about the whole D five, that we've had issues.
McDonald's.
McDonald's. We've had sound issues, we've got sound containing walls up, we've had issues with some of the dealerships with hours of operation behind the wall. I've seen it off and on for fifteen years that usually they're good neighbors, but who've had these issues because you have the residential's abutting, literally abutting.
So are they going to be put in place to help manage the sound issues, the residential in relation to the fast food? Have they been successful? And can we model all that?
Yes, if you get into this thing. I had a comment that a change of use, any change of use for this establishment should go to the planning board. And that's something for the, this is, Chris, this is what I'm, that's how we get sound walls. If you look at the ordinance, there's nothing about sound containing walls. If you look at McDonald's, how did that happen? The residents showed up, the planning board had jurisdiction, and it was discussed. And that was the solution was that it's sound containing walls. And then it would have been sneaking up on it on the hours of operation because of the impact. So right now, the board only hears change of uses from resident, from applications that put in commercial kitchens. It might be a change of use from retail to retail, but if you put in commercial kitchen, if you just throw in Division Street, the idea is to make sure the noise and any odors or aesthetics work in that setting. So you're not having that exhaust fan on top of somebody else's apartment. So right now, the board does hear change of uses and basically restaurants going into spaces that don't have restaurants. And in the E C B, you hear a change of use for anything that's not. The concern was whatever, so you don't float away or become kind of public hazard if the stuff is under three or four feet of water. So right now, those are two examples of when the board hears change of uses. So the question is, by definition, all these applications you heard by the planning board just to address the site's citizens.
I think what you're saying is the state's going to have its requirements. The state doesn't know where the municipality is going to be located. So when that decision is made or that request is made, should you guys or the government guy or whoever is structured have the ability to make additional requirements over and above what the state requires?
Yeah.
And we have the right to do that. We have the right to say, add our own level of requirements on top of what the law says.
If the ordinance says that that change of use has to come to us.
Correct.
Then I'll put that in the ordinance and it wouldn't come to us. If they're not going to catch it.
Well, what happens is the partial variance of the planning board, any kind of variance, but we're kind of, the ordinance really doesn't address the parking demand for this type of retail.
Yeah, it's not going to be a variance.
Well, it could be. The question is, right now, if there's a variance, it's plenty for me to argue because this is a thing. So the question is, forget the variances, should the application be heard just to make sure?
I think, I would say yes, right? We treat it like a retail going into a kitchen and there's a different use of it, right? I would say it's similar. Retail's retail though.
Yeah, we cannot, we cannot, it's retail to retail.
You can do it. Right now, restaurants. You can have a bookstore going to a restaurant.
No, but, but what I'm saying is if you have a retail store and you want it to be a marijuana retail store, it's retail to retail. It's no change of use. That's just based on your current ordinance. If the ordinance is changed in another way to require that that type of place is. That's sort of like picking on the marijuana dealer though. I think that's like spot zoning kind of stuff.
Well, we just do it, for example, if we have a car store, you put it commercial, it's retail, retail.
And they don't have the cars.
They did, because of the kitchen.
Yeah, but there's no kitchen in these. You're saying that there's no kitchen in these.
Both the introduction and new type of business into the ecosystem, right?
And it's retail. It's a legal, so it's like if they were selling vitamins.
So, so all we need to do is.
It's the same thing.
Put the requirement in this ordinance that it's got to be heard by the thing. Can't do that.
To review X, Y, Z. I think that's got to be delineated. And since there's no smoking allowed here, since there's really just a retail, for retail, we'd have to think about what those parameters would be. So we could say they have to come to us for parking, for noise.
Oh, and, and so their parking study.
Right.
I mean, you want to put the parameters in there. It would have to be for specific reasons. It couldn't just be because you want to sell marijuana, we're going to tag you for the thing.
What we have here is, you can make an argument that this is no difference from a parkers store, and the big difference is the number retailers. There might be only a few in the region, who knows? There's only a few in the regions. The volume for traffic, car traffic might be warranted traffic study because of the queueing on twenty two.
So are we, we're not just, but has anybody looked at like other places in other states and do they have parking issues?
No, I was just.
We just, we just, I mean, if you go to the liquor store twenty two before a weekend, there's a heck of a lot of parking.
I suggested that. I just, I got brought in a little later and I talked to Kevin. I wanted to do that.
Yeah, I, I.
I want to look at what is the.
What is the flow?
The flow is, the concern is, and we have this problem now because of COVID. About three years ago, this board, I put the drive through to McDonald's. And we had all the testimony. Now if you go there, there's queueing on twenty two because of COVID. People now are not going in, they're using their cars. So.
The opposite is kind of true for Taco Bell. Taco Bell, everything's going to be good. As soon as it opened, there were lines out on twenty two all the way to McDonald's and.
That's my, that's my.
That's going to be the first.
I mean, that's, I think that is a problem of twenty two in itself because the there is no, there is no space to have like a lane. And so.
I mean, in summary, you can look at a noise perspective, you can look at it from odor, but reality is not to create an D and B. That's the summation.
Right, but the.
We look at the traffic to say, okay, the site can accommodate this.
But that's what I'm saying. We don't have a study that shows in Massachusetts, there's a store with this size parking spaces and they're never full. Because you're going to have to establish a parking required. That's what I'm saying. We don't have any store. I mean, there are.
Establish or just say that the applicant has to do a parking study to show it works.
So what? How, how do we know how many customers?
Well, that, per traffic console would happen.
How would they know? Do you stay, is the average stay on a seven eleven ten minutes? But at a cannabis store, it's twenty five minutes? We don't know. In New Jersey, because we don't have any kind of way to measure.
That's, that's what the study was.
Yes, but I'm just.
A study.
Typically, we ask for a study because they need a variance.
No, the study, applicant has to do.
Actually, we, we don't ever ask for a study unless there's a variance.
We're just going to evaluate.
But this is what we develop.
The subject matter makes sense.
I was just giving the exam, asking.
I'm just saying it.
We don't have a reference point. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
We don't have a reference point, but that's why we get a traffic study, you know, a parking study. So that we will have a reference point. And any standard we set right now for the number of spaces is based on complete conjecture.
With the exception of number of employees, things of that nature. That you could set one stage for employee delivery, whatever.
Delivery, right.
That you could definitely set, but unless you go with a square footage requirement. My problem is, if someone comes in here, we don't ask them for a traffic study unless they need a variance. And then they need to prove to us that they can, they can get that variance. They don't need that many parking spaces and stuff. But we're going to have this particular retailer come in and have to do the parking study even if they don't need a variance. And that I have, I think is a little.
That goes back to, when you allow something in a zone, there's a presumption that the roads can accommodate this. That's why you don't see a lot of traffic studies because if you allow some use, then you're basically saying the roads cannot handle that use.
Yes, but we're talking about parking. You're saying it's the parking, not the roads, but the amount of parking that's on the site we are going to ask them to do a study for in order to make sure there's enough parking on site so they don't spill into the road, right?
Right.
So, but we don't ask that unless there's a variance required by somebody right now. So why?
I see because we got standards. There's no standard here for silos. That's what I'm saying.
That's what I'm saying. I think, is there a way we can set, find a standard by looking at case studies in other states that are similar to us, like Massachusetts, for example?
Yes, you could certainly.
I just feel very comfortable saying the onus is on this particular retailer, whether you're for or against, say, marijuana. If it were vitamins, we wouldn't ask the guy to do a traffic study to make sure his parking worked unless he did a variance.
Store was going to be super crowded though.
We don't know. But that's my point. I don't know. Have any of you shopped in a, in a store for marijuana? No. Okay, so we don't know what the traffic is. And I feel really weird making all these rules when we don't have any. He's an anecdotal of it, so what the traffic.
Yeah, and I agree on that, that I don't want to single out a business and say, just because you want to have this type of business, we're going to make you jump through suspend, you know, five thousand dollars on borders and ten thousand on traffic studies and everything else for what might happen that we don't know yet. Now, I would, and I take this where you're getting at, is setting some kind of stipulation saying you need per square footage, X amount of parking. And we should be able to look at, you know, and I know we're more densely populated than different areas possibly. But just take one in Massachusetts, you know, they have six, you know, different places. We should be able to find out what they have and just call like, is there an issue? So, you know, and base it somewhat on that. And then we could always adjust it later if we find out that way. You were way aggressive.
I don't disagree with that. And I think the issue right now is one of timing. And we don't have time.
Look at the end of August.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have.
Well, no, by the twenty first, you have to adopt the, the world has to adopt the ordinance as to where it's going to be allowed or not allowed. Which is what you're doing. It doesn't mean that after the fact, you can't amend that ordinance. It just means that you, yeah, you don't adopt something by August fifteenth, you're, you're defaulting back to what the state requires.
Yes.
So you're doing that. It doesn't mean you don't have the ability afterwards.
And that's, that was where I was going to suggest is that we once we make recommendations right now, it's high enough to our satisfaction, knowing that we're going to go back and do what we.
All right. Well, I have a question. The other option is to opt out for now. Is that?
That's not our choice.
Well, I'm, I'm just asking a general question. I'll ask the council people in a second. But the fact, is it true that we can opt out for now and then opt in when we get our stuff together, so to speak? Because we don't have our stuff together. I think that if you make some of these requirements, it's going to single a particular property out. That's going to be the only place you're going to have it. And anybody who lives nearby, because there's going to be people who live nearby, their heads are going to fall off. Because maybe they're not too thrilled with this. And I understand about the tax revenue, but that's not anything for that guy who lives on X street, bunch of parallel. We remember how the biggest, the biggest application we had here in twenty years wasn't J S M, wasn't the hospital, it was McDonald's. You, you were sitting right next to me. We were here for hours. We were here tote bags while we stopped having meetings at the back. So I'm just saying that. It's the truth. So it's going to be a bag of poop. It's going to be crazy.
I understand what you're saying, but it's not our decision to make.
Next question. Mayor and council person. You guys are on board with this? Do you think this is a good idea? That we need the tax revenue?
That is not a question of tax revenue.
Because Lily lives in my house. I hate them all. So I'm just telling you, I was helped.
Council had a public hearing, it was obliterated. We've crafted an ordinance for introduction, which we have the hearing on coming up, which includes up to two retail establishments restricted to the D five zone. There was some feeling from other council people to be more expansive. In fact, I was a little surprised at that, that there was interest of other members of the council to go further, to put it on major, put it on all state highways, including twenty eight, which got some interest at first and then it was, it was toned down to this one. The, the option of opting out had no traction with the council. And, and I will say for the public record that, you know, yes, there is a tax component. There is a revenue component. There are not any. But that, at least in my seat, was not the prime driver of this. Because we don't know how much we're going to sell. And, and it's, it's not a question of how much it's going to make. And yes, it is going to make. And the fact is, we may be the only game in town, which is driving the discussion for, you know, if we build it, they will come and come and go. We want to be sure that we can control to the extent that this volume can do, control the onsite activity, which, which to me is, is the main thing is the parking.
So my question is then, is that one acre set in stone? Or do we feel like one acre will not possibly uphold that much in our experience and we need to make a larger acreage for the qualification? If I'm, if you look at the fast food restaurants that we're having trouble with, they go out onto twenty two.
I don't have any problems with that.
Um, you know, you know, like, like Dunkin' Donuts, what kind of acreage are they on? That's obviously not an acre.
Where you, uh-huh.
Right.
So, can we update our requirement for the acreage, knowing, like, using what we do know, which is, we're already having trouble with, with these smaller sites with donuts? So, you know.
The concern with that is almost every lot, so we can all, structure that.
Right.
We can make the acres ten thousand, but it's still developed, so you're still gonna come in saying, I'm here. Because you don't, if you have a vacant lot, no development, that would, that would be something that would be very pertinent, because, but if you have lots, which are all developed, there's structures on it.
Yeah, but if somebody's gonna convert, like, let's say, one of the, the Dunkin' Donuts, I'm just using one of the buildings, that we know, if they convert that structure to selling marijuana, we know there's not a parking there, because the lot is too small. So we require a bigger acreage than we have it, and even if there's a building onsite, hopefully there'll be more places to park, because it seems to be the parking is the issue with most people right now, that they're worried about.
Then what do you do in that strip mall context, because it seems that if we go in a strip mall, doing acreage of the overall site?
Right, uh, well, then it becomes like a parking, parking number issue at the end, so. And then, I guess we don't.
I think the pressing number might be the, I think the count of spots might be the deciding, again.
What?
Uh, beginning stage, we can always amend it, I don't understand that, um, but I, I think rather than the acreage, because again, I also think, you know, maybe they want to have a smaller building, more spots, parking spots. If they're just selling, I mean, if things come in little bags, I mean, they're not giant crates, they don't need a huge, they don't need a huge building at it, so.
Have you been to a marijuana?
I have.
So what about a parking requirement that provides for employees?
And that's.
And then net square footage of sales area based upon number of people allowed in the building, something like that, that the fire code requires.
Right.
So in this net area, fifteen people, twenty people, fifty people are allowed, and then do a parking requirement, something like that.
But we need to model, we need to, need to model it off, and the closest thing I can think of is a liquor store.
So, what happens if they go into like, where the post or liquor store is? If there's a building, if they go in there, that's a huge parking lot there anyway, so then they wouldn't require a parking study because it's all parking.
Well, no, because they would have to, they would have to allow for the postcard or parking, the liquor store parking.
But they each does have a certain amount of people that they're allowed to park there for each store.
They haven't proved that they're parking, they had no parking for everything.
They had shared parking over there, or?
Yeah, they, we, I remember going through parking with them when they changed the post and everything, they had to give us parking numbers that would accommodate.
Their store?
The stores, because they had friendly things with restaurants.
So, if you have, if a marijuana store goes in, and they said we need ten spaces, they probably have ten.
Well, that's, again, we're working without any information, that's where I, that's what we need to amend quickly.
Or their.
Well, to me, there's a requirement for our shopping center, and you don't look at it used as a shopping center.
You can, you can use a shopping center, or you can't use a shopping.
Can, C A N.
Yes, that's.
A, I think it's one in two fifty or one in two hundred, fully wall shopping center.
Irrespective of the uses.
Correct, so the ordinance does have a shopping center, you try to get away from going through each tenant every time a tenant changes out.
But does the state have a requirement that says it has to be a standalone building?
No, not in the shop process definition, it doesn't seem to be.
Well, no, what I'm saying is that I happened to be talking to somebody this weekend, who was on the council of like, Mawaw, and they were talking about this. She said specifically, it has to be a standalone building, it cannot share.
Based on their ordinance, or based on the state?
I, I thought it was a state requirement, that's what I thought, I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
Shopping centers into one of the places you can have it, if, if it was standalone building.
If you look at the V five, and you say the car dealers aren't going in there, so all of them staying there, Volvo's staying there, and say, fuck these car washes, they're going to work, but that, car market. You do that, you're left with the shopping centers where the cross places.
But that's close to school.
I'm just telling you, in reality, if you look at some property, these smaller ones are gonna change.
Well, but, well, quite frankly, quite frankly, cars are being bought online more and more, so we don't know if that's, if the, the car dealers are gonna.
My lawyer will do anything, somebody offering right now money, anything.
Yes, I mean, I don't think we can assume that they'll be there forever, because.
Hyper.
So, we, I mean, we definitely have room in our V zone to accommodate them.
Well, I think, I think where Karen said was, was establishing some type of baseline on some data, right? And then bumping that up against the properties, if we come out and says there need to be a hundred places per establishment, we look across, and there's like, and we go, well, there's only two places, the car dealership and the liquor store, that hundred places.
But we can't be arbitrary in that number, yes, we can't be arbitrary in that number.
That's why I'm saying we base it off of some type of data we have at hand, yeah, if there's a fire, if something.
If I'm not mistaken, what happens is, it falls back to our existing schedules, with our existing menu sorters.
Which is the.
Yeah.
But now, I'll put a question on that, so, so if we, if we suspect an overuse, given the current standard, right? And we develop a queueing issue on twenty two, and there are issues asking, right, how does that affect the bureau?
Well, it's not gonna be affected, first of all, right?
Honest question, I just don't know, like, is that, is that.
It's not where the queue is.
Is it allowed?
You're along twenty two, once it's hit, there's nothing, this way.
I don't have any stopping, we have.
They drive through pharmacies, I just don't go, but the law allows or disallows.
Business for a drive through, it's an ideal business.
Well, I mean, we can put a stipulation in, if there's a drive through, then they need to come to us to make sure everything is completely static. But I don't understand why we're not treating this like a liquor store, retail wise, it's the same recreational use, just a different.
Because we think, the, the main difference is the number of the region. And that's the unknown.
Which is the option, the option for the shopper to, to go to this.
Right, right now, there's liquor stores, you can throw a rock in, you're not gonna throw a rock at these retailers, it's not gonna happen. For example, Bridgewater's already opted out, Hillsborough's opted out, some have, I, we're, we're saying two. So the question is, if we only have literally six retailers, it's not like six hundred liquor stores. So, the intensity of use might be ten fold at this store because of that.
I guess that's why even my concerns, approving something you know isn't going to work, I know we're basing things arbitrarily, but.
Well, we don't, we don't know, that's the thing.
We have no, we have no idea, either way, we don't have enough information.
Right, enough information.
It seems like, well, Bridgewater, you said is, they're opting out, for now.
What about areas?
But they can go in, they can change their minds, guess what they're gonna do? Bet you a hundred dollars, we get a cannabis store on our border on number twenty two somewhere. Cause it's not their town.
Right.
Kindergarten, big bright lights, spread on Union Avenue. Not Bridgewater, it's Bridgewater, but it's on our border, it's not near their houses, it's your house. We're gonna get, we're gonna get this on twenty two, right on the border. We'll get it, they'll get the revenue, we'll get the traffic, and the hassle, and we'll bang our heads against the wall, trying to not go near the schools. Two schools on twenty two, so that whole strip there, from Lincoln Island.
So let me ask this question, what is the requirement, when it used to be no group zones around schools, is there a requirement in the state law saying distance from schools at all?
It's easy to go.
They come in to get ready.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, they're not allowed to.
But that can go in here, I mean, there are towns that are putting in their ordinance to not meet two hundred feet of residence of a school.
Because that Ethan Allen building is a pretty perfect.
There you go.
Hey, the Jersey.
So, so from our perspective, as, as the planning board, we're making a recommendation for them to update, change the ordinance, or do whatever, before they pass it, at, you know, their next meeting, or whenever that, is it on the next agenda?
It's on the agenda, but we would have one extra meeting, first meeting in August, I mean, that'd be the latest, but it is advertised for hearing adoption.
So it is.
That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean it's, it's gonna be loaded on Monday, but the hearing will happen.
All, all I was saying is that, you know, we, we got that, I think we're gonna spin our wheels here until midnight again, like this McDonald's one, I didn't have the pleasure to join you guys for, but.
No, no, it wasn't just one meeting, it was, it was several, it was like seven meetings.
So rather than spinning our wheels on this one topic right now, that we're not gonna get any answers on, because I think all of us agree that there's not enough data to make a decision, can we look at the rest of my report and send to the council that we have a concern about this, you know, to, to look at it and maybe get some data?
I think the safeguard, it's in the easier, easier approach, in my opinion, just to say it requires a planning board approval, and the planning board will, will look at, make sure there's no adverse impacts. I just put a sentence in there, and we'll deal with all these down the road.
I just don't, I, I think I really did on that, I don't want any retailer to retail, happy to come in here just because it's gonna be a week.
It's not retailers, we've already just run retailers. I'm not saying blanket, all retailers.
No, no, I, I know, just.
The only thing is, maybe we go to something.
I don't want to single out one specific industry, you don't have the information.
And we have to act within a timeframe, without all facts, and what Jason says, we're not gonna have the site tonight, and we're not gonna have it probably in the next couple of weeks.
What else other than parking, that we feel need to come in for, not site plan?
Well, there's, there's limited in their hours already, I believe, in the state laws, it's already limited.
It's already in here.
Yeah.
Site plan, I mean, there's no pigeon, there's no exhaust, they're gonna have to do the odor, but there really no odor here anyway.
Trash removal?
What else?
No, it's not even that a lot of trash. Cardboard boxes.
And there's a thing, we're really picking on just because of what they're selling, not any use of the building other than the product that they're selling.
They literally are vitamins, it's the best thing I can, or liquor store, those are the two things I can come up with, that, there's no food being sold. Like, you know, the pharmacies now sell food and all sorts of other stuff, so it's not even that expensive, it's limited.
But I, I don't think it's about what's being sold, I think about the intent.
It is intentional, basically.
Yes, no, I totally get, I totally agree with you.
Doesn't matter what's being sold. No, and I, and I agree with you on that.
It's sort of like a craft beer that opens up once a week and everybody shows up, I totally get that.
It's, it's just the intensity of use, potential intensity, they have sites there which are very small, that I think we can all agree, I will be with that, for example, a gas station, Route twenty two, gas is tiny, I think we can all say it probably won't work there because of the intensity.
So, but do we have retail parking, like, let's take that gas station, would our retail parking requirements negate that anyway?
The whole drive through, which, what are the retail?
Well, that would be ideal for that, believe me.
It would be, it would be variants. We have to get it.
No, so like.
Get off of this parking, because we don't have an answer.
Yeah.
We, we gotta move on, and, and our ordinance has a requirement for parking now.
That's what I'm saying, we have a retail parking ordinance, like, if you have such type sized retail store, you must have this in parking, right? We have that, right, right?
Yes, what it would have to do.
But we know what that's.
So we would have to amend it.
What the chairman's saying is, we have to go through the N I, N I I C S code, and find out what the closest cannabis retailer gets into, and then we back it down to the S I C code and see what that parking adds. So what the chairman is saying is, yes, we could probably, it's why they come out with one in, one in one seventy five, one in two fifty, based on the square footage facility.
So we amend, so if we.
That's, that's there right now.
And we can do that by then, you know, our schedule, right?
We can do that by schedule C's, the parking, not specific, right, takes time, so there is part, no, man, there is, when you have the university.
Nobody's buying any of these things anytime in the near future anyway, because of the process, I think we have time to amend things later, after, after the ordinance, after the council has to do by August fifteen, because they have to apply to the state, then apply here, then apply there, and it's a very false, I think we have some time to.
Bernie, if I can ask your indulgence and ask Kevin very quickly to explain the process once any other ordinance is passed, just in terms of what you learned in your webinars, and I know you were on for three and a half hours the other day as well, and the ordinance gets adopted, Bernie and I went over the shop, what, what, what kind of timeframe are we realistically looking at for the state to grant those?
You want me to get off the microphone?
Oh, yes.
So, so, I mean, I did attend all this, first of all, it, it's the CRC regulating licensing, so it's a CRC, I attended all of them. So I bet, they are not able to answer some of the questions that you're bringing up today, right? So the only thing they can suggest, it was from Somerville, and some, and municipality has pretty much complete control over what they want to do. So what happens is, this is the same as a liquor store, every municipality in the state of Jersey can opt out of liquor stores, right? There's municipalities in the entire state of Jersey that don't have liquor, right? This is no different, this is a legal commodity, right? So that's the one thing that people do have to kind of get over the conversation, so legal commodity. The CRC appears to be going to control the, the, now keep in mind, our ordinance is non-consumption, so odor plays very little role. Now, those that may have dabbled in cannabis at one time, right, they're still in odor, so certainly that could be put into place on retail components, but that, the whole odor control is meant for processing, like, when you see that, that's processing. So this is no different than a retail liquor store, like, a liquor store moved out, someone else moved in, it's the same, right? The, um, the, the one comment that I had heard was, the state, the state is gonna control the process, so what happens is, if, if, if chairman and mayor got together and they wanted to open up, open up a store, the first thing they have to do is get a license, not from the bureau, right? So what happens is, they have to come to the bureau, they have to come from municipality and get a letter of support from the governing body, right? The governing body is the entity that has to provide the store, they also have to get a letter from the zoning officer, saying that the location that they secured is compliant. So, so they will have to know where their government. One of the arguments yesterday during the CRC meeting was that vendors, who are listening to many of them yesterday speaking, potential vendors, their argument is, okay, we decide that twenty two's the location, they're not going to go around twenty two, they have to secure a site. Well, what's the landlord gonna do, the landlord's gonna say, okay, if I can't rent this out, here's your rent for the next eight months, while you're waiting to get a license from the state of Jersey, so that is an argument that's being made by the potential licensee, saying, well, I'm gonna be paying rent for eight months. I don't even know if, if the state's gonna give me a license, right? So that is an argument, but what happens is, they do have to secure a site, so, so they're gonna have to come to the bureau, they're gonna have to say, hey, listen, you two guys are gonna have to come to the bureau, the governing body's gonna have to get a letter of support, and they're gonna have to give you a zoning approval, saying the site that you secured is compliant, right? Then you can go to the CRC and get your license, right? Now, the governing body could do that for fifteen entities, even though we only have two potential licenses, right? And then what happens is, if, if they decide to do that, and people come in and they're able to, maybe they secure the same site. Maybe they go to the landlord and say, landlord, listen, if I get the license first, I'm under penalty, this guy says differently, right? So what, what happens is, they can have fifteen vendors that potentially want to be in Somerville, and then what happens is, then it comes back to the governing body, and the governing body has an evaluation process, they would have to evaluate and go through their process to learn, okay, how are they gonna provide security? How are they gonna handle trash? How are they gonna handle, um, you know, their signage, or their, the way they're spacing them? How are they, how are they gonna handle local employment, right? Cause that's a condition, how, how are they gonna, you know, you know, they're gonna have to tell us where they're banking, because right now on the federal side, certain banks aren't allowing them to use, use the federal, the banks, so they have to get a, get a, um, an approval from a bank. I've spoken to a couple of banks, and that have said, yes, they, they have, they know their issue, and they're big banks, and they're going to do, but that may not be difficult. So then they finally come back to the governing body, and the governing body says, yes, this is who we want, and you can open up. Just so you know, that's gonna be a long time for us, right? Yeah, yesterday during the conversation with CRC was talking about, well, you know, let's talk about this ordinance, because the window is too short, right? We have to know by August twenty first. The problem is, there's legislation which is not getting any traction to extend that, so they made it clear, the commission made it clear yesterday, that they don't expect that to be extended. So what's happening is, yeah, you are having municipalities opt out, they're opting out temporarily. Everybody, because in the beginning, there was a thought that if you opted out, you were out for five years, you were hurt. Well, of course, they changed that, and they said you're only opting out temporarily, so as far as competition, if a place opened up on twenty two and they're doing a thing of business, guess who's opting in? Everybody else around us, so I wouldn't worry about that, and to be honest with you, we can change our ordinance, we think two is gonna. And to be honest with you, we can change our ordinance if we think two is going to grab so much traffic. We can make it four. We can make it nine. I say, wait, the governing body, right? So they can actually do the market as well. So as long as you increase, you're okay. As long as you expand, you can't just go below. You can't go into a restriction. I will tell you that Class 6, which is the delivery service, is not something that any municipality can opt out. Everybody gets that. So if a store opens up on 22, you know, just like today, like years ago, we'd say, where are we going to park the restaurants? Well, who cares? We got DoorDash, we got Uber Eats, we got everywhere else, right? No one knows what they did five years ago. That's what's going to happen here. There's already businesses being formed that actually are, in its sense, cannabis delivery service. And that's what's going to happen in a lot of these places. They're not going to necessarily operate in huge places. And I will tell you, the CRC, when I say the CRC, they haven't had a lot of municipal decisions. They've actually, they've moved very slow. They're still, they're still currently reviewing 24 municipal applications from two years ago. This commission is very new and they've been charged with that. Now, the municipal market, the medicinal market is going to get an option also to go into the recreation market. So right now, you may, I don't know how many are out there, eight or nine, and they're going to be receiving calls about not enough. But Somerville doesn't have one. So what happens is, is the municipal medicinal market is going to get an option. If those municipalities agree, they're going to get an option to get their licenses as well. So who knows how many there are going to be in the state of Jersey? It's a legal, it's a legal option, right? So, I mean, it kind of, and that's really the process. They are, people that are calling are believing that they're going to get a license before the end of the year. I don't truly believe that can happen based on the speed of the CRC now. I don't see until the middle of 2022. Now, there was a lot of talk about, okay, well, we have this small window. We have to get this done by August 21st, right? In the council's sense, we have to get it done by August 3rd because we don't have another meeting that we meet that timeline. So they need that timeline, sorry. Is, there's certainly an opportunity to change it. And that was a lot of the questions. Could you change it? You can't, you really can't make it, like, you can't go from two to one. So the governing body couldn't go from two to one. But if there are other things that needed to be changed that were not substantive, that can be changed. You know, I haven't seen any ordinances. Now, keep in mind, why aren't we only on Somerset County? We're actually, I think, the third one in Somerset County that's approved. Or I should say considering it. Right? So there's, Southboundbrook had their ordinance ready, they heard it. And Franklin is doing, I believe, all five classes, all six classes. Southboundbrook's doing retail license. I haven't heard any licensing requirement that would require them to come back to the planning board for the approval. Because that's not the way the legislation was intended.
Back to the planning board, what do you mean?
Like, to get licensed. It was strictly, it was strictly on the bonus of the governing bodies, municipalities, the state of Jersey to make the decisions for the public, right? Because they're elected. It was strictly set up that way for a reason, right? In Somerville, I think it was 72% of the vote positive of marijuana. So it's up to the governing body to make those decisions. I don't think there's anybody that's saying, well, the planning board's going to make that decision when they get the license. They don't get that. That's not intended. The license is intended. It's just like a liquor license or a gaming license or anything else that we develop our own.
So, and I guess where I was going with this, is we have the same control over site issues that we would have with anybody else, right?
That's, well, when you say control, so the ordinance, yeah, the ordinance is in front of you to comment. And obviously, the governing body can, you know, corroborate that. So the answer is yes. But I will tell you, you mentioned, so the governing body, they charged you with walking to Colorado, Massachusetts, which I did. The demographics and it's so very different. New Jersey is just so different, so very different. Did you have any idea, I spoke to municipalities in Colorado that are our population? Well, guess what? They're 15 square miles. We're two. So it's very hard to compare. Massachusetts, I spoke to their regulatory board. Massachusetts did say in one of their webinars that one thing that they would always be concerned with was not putting it on like a ministry, right? So that was a discussion that the governing body had. Where 22, 287, you know, 202, 202, leads to different areas. And now, we did hear from a lot of, you know, one of our council meetings, they have a lot of cannabis advocates. And that was one of their concerns too, is they don't want a government to know of other, right? But there was no one saying how much parking needed, things like that. But they were saying, you know, it just needs a highway access. That's why the B5 is the most.
So just from understanding the way you said the process works, basically, they're coming back to the council with their plan as if, what we're saying, they should hypothetically come to the planning board with this plan of how they're going to make it. They have to come to you guys for that anyway.
They have to. And what we anticipate will happen now, currently, listen, we've gotten, we've received, this county has received calls from businesses that are in this business and other states are in it, right? So they called us and we said, you know, and they said, what are you guys looking at? We don't want to get ahead. And they looked at some of the areas, right? And then there's been some smaller folks, you know, smaller entities that know where we're at. Because they call, they have to look. And then we have some residents that actually have sort of our meetings inquired. But the thought process, Jason, is when they come in, they apply, that's, when they apply the first time, that's when the municipality is going to vet it. And that is under the requirements of the municipality.
So you could look at it as the council and say, okay, you want to be on, you know, the Dunkin' Donuts property or as you call it. We don't really feel like it'll fit there with the parking requirement and you can deny, the council can deny the application.
I don't think that's true. Because again, they said the zoning officer, that's my question.
That's not one of the criteria. The criterion is, we could do leases, we could do, how are you going to secure the area at night? Who are you going to hire? There's about five or six local criteria that we have in the ordinance.
That zoning letter that's going to be, zoning specifically, whatever. That just deals with whether it's in the right zone that allows it or does that go through all the criteria of whatever ordinance is adopted and says, check, 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 check?
Well, I don't know the exact answer to that, Larry. The reason is because, but they do have to go to the state and secure the site. So that's the word that no one seems to know what it means.
Yeah.
Are they securing it by having a letter from a landlord that says, hey, if you get your license, you can come here? And they'll figure out your rental line.
I know the people that I've dealt with that are looking to purchase properties specifically for growing, they try to do, they try to sign it and try and tie it up for as long as possible, like you said, and figure out some sort of rent or payment, taxes, et cetera, carrying costs that they can use for this time period while they're trying to get their license. So that, signing a contract, maybe signing a lease might be enough. I don't necessarily think you have to own it. But, you know, but one of the things I was just thinking, I'm just thinking outside the box a little bit. That's why I was asking about the zoning letter. Will that go through all the criteria? When they come back and essentially do like an RFP process before the governing body, when you've got 15 people coming in for these two spots, could one of the requirements be that they present to the planning board for the planning board's comments? And that's got to go in their packet of submissions to you?
The only thing I would suggest is that it be a committee similar to what you do with other committees, waiver committees, things like that. Because, listen, you can impose that, and I'm not speaking for the governing body, but I don't think that's something they're going to accept in equipment, right? They're not going to, I don't, again, I don't speak for them, but I just get the feeling that it might be something. But if there was a subcommittee of, you know, of the talent that they have of the day is here, that is going to review it, you know, then I think that's, that makes up the lie. I just don't know how, again, the ordinance is set up, statute is set up for the governing body, right? Right? That's really what it's set up to do. And I haven't seen anybody change anything, saying no. Because in reality, if you wanted to go to the planning board, you know, if the planning board had approved it and they denied it, then like, then what happens?
Kevin, I think the key is this signing off by the zoning officer. So could the zoning officer, before he signs off, says, I'm concerned about you needing this stipulation of the code, could you give us a hard-hitting study?
I know the zoning officer's going to look at it like, the zoning officer looks at all grant applications.
Right.
And he says, okay, approved. Or he says, planning board approval.
But they'll see if they do variants, won't they?
If he goes through it, you're not going to have planning board. And the site doesn't need parking. He's going to say, planning board approval.
But you're back to needing those standards.
But we need those standards. That's what I'm saying.
Go back to where the chairman, if the standards are there, it's not specific.
Right, but what we're hearing from Kevin is, which is there's, unless it's being delivered to their homes, it's not, it's not necessarily going to be a place that people drive and shop for a little while and pick up a few things.
I understand, but there's still a parking standard.
Yeah, but we have retail parking standards.
Right.
So.
So that, if a parking standard would be applied to the site, it doesn't add a good parking. The zoning officer's going to deny it seeing this planning board approval.
And I think, like, like we do with most drive-throughs, we can, can we put a stipulation that the drive-through has to come before.
Well, if it's something to drive through, then that's changing all that.
Do you need a variance for a drive-through automatically?
Well, which planning board approval.
It does. So if they wanted to put a drive-through out there.
I don't think, I don't need to control that.
No, that's okay.
But the security plan is not going to, the governing body is not going to allow a security plan that says you could drive up to a window and, you know, we.
At least like we're our security. We're our professionals.
Okay, so then we don't have that issue that we're worried about there.
Yeah, I mean, and listen, the CRC, and I'm not here to knock them, they're put in a bad position. They got, you know, they got hired very late to kind of do something that really wasn't intended to be done before November election, right? Let's be honest. So the problem is, is it's that small window. And listening to them, you know, if you went on to j.com, you would have seen, they're getting bashed. But it's not necessarily, it's just that they just have this small window to work with. It doesn't sound like they're lending any, in the beginning, the meetings were filled with municipal, you know, mayors and so forth and administrators. Now, the municipalities are saying, forget it, you know? And now it's, now the meetings are filled with potential licensees that want to get into the business, you know?
Colin, you read the comment.
I do have a comment that really in support of what Kevin's saying, is that the ordinance and the current state of the state presumes that you've got zoning with controls already built into it. The B5 zone has all this stuff. And I don't think you can go much beyond that right now. Kevin said that you can come back and tweak the ordinance, but you're up against some timelines and you're up against what the governing body wants. And I think by putting it in the B5 zone, you've got all of the criteria behind it that a zoning officer could use to say, it meets the criteria for the B5 zone bingo. But then, if you find it needs to be changed at a later date, you can do so. You're talking 12 months lead, I mean. But you're only talking three weeks to have something done. So standing here arguing about how many angels get on the head of a pin, doesn't really work.
Right. Well, I do have a question about changing the ordinance. We ran into a little bit of a problem when it was back to the 7-Eleven that was going on in the Navy there. There was an application, change something, back and forth, determine to. Plus, is that going to be okay to change the ordinance after we approve?
I think there are, I don't want to get into this discussion, Larry, but I understand what you're talking about. There are other issues relating to that as well, that weren't zone.
I'm just wondering whether or not if we establish and say, yeah, these are the rules, whatever. And then we decide we want to change it later. Well, now it's too late because we told them it was this rule. And then we said, oh, we're going to tweak this, tweak that. They already bought a property that we know about.
Yeah, I appreciate that concern.
I just don't know. Is that something that we should special?
I think, I think we have retail zoning in, we have retail zoning for liquor stores, for any of the stores on B5. We have issues with the drive-throughs, which we didn't know they'd be so popular. It might go away now as pandemic is easing. But that's actually an important thing where they shouldn't be, you know, that's something that.
And what Kevin is telling us is that we don't really have jurisdiction on what the council is going to do.
Correct.
But you have jurisdiction of what the zone could be, because I used to say jurisdiction, right? When you establish the B5, right, that's the B5, however of rules you have in the B5, right? But as far as that's a release of this business, it's whether they're going to be allowed in the B5 or not allowed in the B5, right?
But that's it?
That's it.
Yeah, that's it.
Did they consider the industrial zone, the Izone?
So what happened was, the governing body talked about the industrial zone for potential processing and cultivation indoors. Based on our attorney's experience with that process, the current I1 and I2 did not lend itself to enough space. And based on the conversations we were having, a lot of webinars, they were talking like, you know,
Clark.
Right? So they were talking formally. In fact, they used the word formally multiple times. However, there are opportunities to do indoors, but it just seemed like it didn't work. And I guess through the vetting process, the governing body, which is kind of, you know, that disappeared. And it just went to retail. I mean, keep in mind, you know, Somerville's kind of a retail town opposed to industrial town.
Okay, well, remember a couple of years ago, we had to have a comfortable discussion about sex shops? You had to have, had to be someplace. And we talked about it, we went into the Izone. That's what we said, you had to have allowed somewhere.
It's in the Izone or the B?
No, it's B6 or something, right? B7?
That's a B.
Yeah. I think, I think the difference here between what we're talking about is, if it's going to be permitted in the B5 zone, it's permitted subject to whatever requirements there are there. If it was a conditional use in that zone or in the other zone, then there's the ability to amend it a little bit to create some additional.
What the condition is. I do think that if you wanted to look at it, you know, certainly look at that. And provided that no one's, now, keep in mind, you have potential licensees that are looking at sites. Now, granted, for my office, I can't speak to zoning because I just don't know. If anybody's actually come in and said, can I get a copy of the B5 ordinance? Because I need to know, you know, because first of all, you know, up until a couple of weeks ago, we were still in a pandemic, so everything was by phone calls. I don't think I really have anybody that called. But I mean, certainly people, because they're here, you know, and there's been multiple, there's been multiple advocacy groups and lobbyists in the state of Jersey that have already told my office and said, hey, is Somerville considering? Our answer is, yes, we are considering. Oh, where? And they tell their clients, and their clients go driving around. And some of their clients have already formed New Jersey. Because again, a lot of the requirements some towns are making are that it has to be, it has to be New Jersey corporation and it has to be New Jer, and potentially connected, like for instance. So we have in our ordinance that, you know, one of that criteria is, you have to have some local connection to Somerset County. What that may be, who knows? They may come into Steve Peters' office and incorporate here. That may be it, right? So that's what they're doing. So like, we have a firm at Asbury Park already called us, but they're not at Asbury Park. They're out of Colorado. They've been in this for eight years. They incorporated down to Asbury Park, they come up. And that's what we're seeing. Keep in mind, I know you're not reviewing the other ordinance, but, you know, there are substantial costs involved. So not as high as, you know, some towns, but certainly a lot higher than others. It's not free. You know, $10,000 annual fee, just, you know, we charge liquor stores $2,000, right? Just as a comparison each year offered, you know? This is $10,000. Now, keep in mind, if they had to come back to the boards and things like that, they'd be posting Astros. And that's just not, it's just not set up for that, you know? I, any ordinance, and I know you were going to say something, any ordinance does say that the mayor can set up an ad hoc committee to review them. And that may be the role that the talent, the table plays, of certain, you know, certain members, right? You know, it's all the other.
Okay.
Thanks, Kevin.
So I think we ought to just let it go what it is. As far as the B5 regulations, yeah. And then until we have some data, you know, we.
Right. Well, added definition for zoning officer.
Then the first comment on that, what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Could be a recommendation. I think that should be the only one.
Well, isn't that the requirement anyway that he said the zoning officer has to sign up on?
Correct. The zoning officers want to read 24 pages to see what the P means. And it's not going to do that. It doesn't say P, and it could be a food store. Because he won't know, or he or she won't know.
Okay, so you just want to flag it to make sure that they.
You have the information, what the P, what, where it can go.
That's not plus, that's food zone.
That's, that's not us, that's for the zoning officers, right?
To make it easier for the zoning officer. Oh, that's, that's...
So, let's make that recommendation. And, uh, go someplace for more. So, wanting to get out here for fifteen months, do you care, if you're willing to leave? Do we vote on that or anything, or is that just?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'll make a motion to make a, make a recommendation to add that particular, uh, comment.
Add a better app somewhere in the ordinance?
To the ordinance, O-six-two-one.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Um, yeah, but before, before we go, that's all over the public comments.
Page three, last sentence before the dribble ordinance, will you read cartoon or cartoon?
Can we just get your name and address?
Linda Barnes, I'm sorry, I was ready to do that my next semester. Two-fourteen West Bridge Street.
Thank you.
Two-ho, two-ho.
Yeah. Spelling right.
I know.
The phrase, it's a terrible spell.
Leave it on the building, it's, it's, oh. They don't wanna think that the case will be made for it.
A motion on the floor.
Sorry. I slipped on the station. Randy Wada.
Yes.
Peter Zinski. Yes. Nettis Sol.
Yes.
Jane Kabuda. Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Ardenkins.
Yes.
Jason Graspa.
Yes.
Al Karesis.
Yes.
Derek Cleveland.
Okay.
But he was very, he's not spoken. He's gotta shoot his screw out of his face, right?
No.
Okay.
It doesn't make a difference, it's like, I get it. No, no, I get it, I'm just, I just, I think we should wait, but...
Larry, your opinion is valid and is accepted.
How long?
Post it.
No, no, I get that.
Hold on. Um, I'm gonna turn the floor over to Deirdre, because she has something to say.
Um, so I've been looking into, um, different solutions for towns that are sort of losing their retirees because there are big houses, they can't afford taxes, lots of different reasons. And, um, looking at different ordinances in towns in, in New Jersey and how they're trying to handle these issues. And so, I came upon one in Maplewood, it's not a topic Mike and Bernie know about this, where they're letting, uh, auxiliary buildings, detached garages, be converted into small apartments or studio apartments where you can either house an in-law, uh, uh, in-law grandparent and, um, or you can, um, have an elderly person live in that and rent their large house, so they can afford to pay their taxes and everything, and, but still, um, stay in the town. And the stipulation for all of this is the owner of the property must live on the property in one of the structures. So I was thinking, as I look at Somerville and all the changes going around, and there's a lot of housing going up, but it's not necessarily affordable housing for some of, um, the retirees, and some of the people would like to stay in the residential areas, not necessarily move into a apartment building, whether we should look at, um, what Maplewood's doing to see if we can maybe accommodate that. We have a lot of detached garages and things of that nature in this town, so, um, I just wanted to grab and see what people felt about that idea.
I'd like to look at it, yeah. Just give a word out of curiosity.
Yeah, and they're converted, it's sort of, I think, Maplewood is basically, I think, as I follow, on California has like this, there's definite protocol structures, the whole thing, the process is like done all the time in California because I guess if they're housing, it should be.
As long as a building checks out, there's some pretty bad looking structures.
Well, obviously, they have to be, yeah. Obviously, they have to be encoded and everything, but it's just the concept of having, we've always had these detached structures that have been garages with a lot of stipulations about their use. Um, but this might be a way to kind of solve a problem of smaller structures in town for people to live in while staying on their property, or while housing an elderly grandmother or something, or parents, that gives them some freedom, but they're nearby, so...
Do you have a copy of your answer?
I, I was reading it online, I will try to find it. They're working on it, it's a work in progress, but I'll try to find the link that I found of the article. Um, and the, I'll try to find sort of the California stipulations or guidelines and circulate them, just to see what we could see about it.
One thing that, remember, of course, is the, is the coverage issue. If it's an existing building and it's just a conversion, that's one thing. But if someone doesn't have a garage...
No, that's...
And wants to build a granny flat in the back...
Well, that's, that's, they, there is a...
Place for garage.
They are looking at that, um, temporary granny flats, what they're called, they're like pods, basically, um, was another thing they're looking at. Um, so there's, they're looking at several different, um, solutions to the problem. Um, and dropping a pod is one of them. But we do have, in Somerville, a lot of detached garages that are already existing. So, the coverage would not change really.
We'd have to look at infrastructure too, see if we can, that kind of stuff.
Oh, obviously, all that stuff has to be moved in.
There's a lot to, you know? I, I would not want to live in my garage. I, I, I have mice that live in it.
Some people have bigger garages.
Frankly, you're not gonna live in your garage, you're living in an apartment that your garage has been converted into, that meets all living standards and codes, so, um...
Well, I think, yeah, it's worth work.
Yeah.
Okay, um... You want me to rat, get some of the draft ordinances that you were talking about?
Yeah, you could, if you could look to, because you probably have access to different resources than I have.
Mr. Chairman, are you authorizing Mr. Cole, Cole and Associates to do that?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't have the problems, so like, um, just, just filling out.
Okay, so do we need to lower it? Nope? We've already opened it up to the public now.
Oh, yeah, that was...
How about a building for ten?
Yes. Okay, come on.
This is the right...
The bar two-fourteen West Bridge Street, with the likelihood that more buildings will be constructed in this town, I ask if the board has considered changing the height limit to no more than four stories. We don't want to look like the canyons of New York, even now, as we're sitting a manion and we look across the street, soon we won't be seeing this one, we'll be seeing a very tall building. Also, the borough is approving development without considering the need to preserve and protect our unique historic buildings and neighborhoods. Are you considering the value that having a unique historic Main Street escape brings to the downtown and contributes to the neighborhood residential areas? The historic element adopted by the planning board does nothing to help the borough or the board do this. It needs to be written or drafted by someone who can advise the borough the best way to explore how to do this and to educate the planning board members about modern approaches to historic preservation. A slightly different topic, if and when the proposal for a restaurant, public market, and rooftop dining at South Bridge and Main comes before you, please consider the historic buildings on the other three corners, the bank, the church, and the merchant lot. The original concept that I saw at council shows a structure that does not match the surrounding buildings, although his building in Easton does look more historic than it said. So please consider asking the applicant to make a new structure appear more historic to blend in with that historic intersection.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we'll close the call.
So Larry, before we adjourn, I'd just like to, on behalf of myself and the council, thank everybody here from the last year. When you signed up for planning board, you figured you'd be meeting here, everything would be as always done. I have to commend Tony, you know, of all the extra it took to put the zoomings together. Kevin took on a level, I don't think he ever had as much involvement with the planning board in fourteen years before this that he did. So I thank you, you know, staff-wise, Karen, you did an excellent job as well, and that's called, Mike as well, all our professional staff, but especially to the volunteers, this was, uh, truly labor love. And, uh, you know, we, we had a less active year, but we still had, you know, business to take care of. And I, I can't thank you enough for, for the flexibility and the, and the perseverance you showed. And we're, we're, we're headed back, you know, into the light. I really, you know, I think I've told you, you know, individually how much I appreciate what we've done this year, but, uh, we, we've done ourselves in the tap crowd, you know, last year. And I, I, I thank you all for every inconvenience you put up with. And, uh, back to normal.
Good.
Thank you.
Motion adjourned.
I move adjourned.
Polls in favor, so... Polls in public.
Thank you. So you have to be here.